Good afternoon, everyone, and welcome to the June 24th, 2014, Richland School District Two, School Board of Trustees meeting. We thank you very much for being here, and we worked exceptionally hard to make sure that we got back out and on time, to start our meeting on time. So I want to thank board members for their cooperation tonight as well in being able to get back out here. Thank you all for being here tonight at our board meeting. At this time, we will stand and have an inspirational reading and a pledge of allegiance. I found this inspirational reading a couple of weeks ago when I was in the Christian bookstore, and thought it was wonderful. Took it, actually a framed document, and I took a picture of it and wanted to share it tonight. It says, "What really matters in life is for us to, and there are 11 things that we should consider doing. Number one, love and accept one another. Number two, pray for one another. Three, tell the truth to each other. Number four, be kind to one another. Bring joy to each other. Serve one another. Be patient with each other. Comfort one another. Forgive one another. Be generous with each other. And honor each other."
Well stated, Mr. Chair.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, may be seated. At this time, the Chair will entertain a motion to approve the current agenda.
Mr. Chair, I make a motion that we approve the current agenda, though table 10 dot two, the discussion of elementary school number 20.
Second.
The motion by Mr. Manning, and second by Ms. Anderson, that we approve the agenda with the tabling of the agenda item dealing with elementary 20. Any further discussion? Hearing none, we're ready to vote. At this time, the Chair will entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve our consent agenda, but we do have an addendum to add to the ratification of personnel. I move that we add that addendum.
Second.
Been approved by, a motion by Dr. Fleming, second by Mrs. Anderson, with the addendum being added. Any further discussion? Hearing none, we're ready to vote. Thank you very much. And with the approval of that consent agenda and that ratification of personnel, I would now like to recognize and acknowledge our new positions that have transpired as a result of that approval. And those positions include principals at two middle schools, introducing the two principals at two high schools, and two administrative personnel at the district office. And I ask you, if you would, as I call your name, if you would stand so that the audience and our, those who are watching us on television will be able to see who you are. The new principal at Blackwood Middle School will be Ms. Charis Mazzie. Ms. Mazzie, please remain standing for us if you will. Our new principal at Kelly Mill Middle School is Mr. Mark Sims. Mark. Our new principal at Spring Valley High School is Mr. Jeff Timoney. Our new principal at Blackwood High School is Dr. Brenda Hefner. Our new assistant superintendent of schools is Dr. Baron Davis. And our second assistant superintendent of schools is Mr. Keith Price. Thank you very much, folks, and welcome. May I have a seat? Also, by way of announcement, we have a young man who's a Boy Scout troop member here tonight, Mr. Luke Groth. Luke, are you here? Would you stand up? Luke is back here. Luke is a member of Troop 202. They meet at Spring Valley Presbyterian Church, and Luke is here tonight working on his citizenship badge, citizenship in the community badge. So welcome, Luke, and let's, thank you for being with us. Miss Specter is asking me to check with you, Luke, if you need something signed afterwards to verify that you were here. Be sure and see us after the meeting, or we can bring it up. Let me check with him if you will, please, to see if there's something we need to authenticate for him being present. Okay, thank you very much. Next on our agenda is special recognitions. Dr. Hamm.
And speaking of Libby Roof, Libby Roof will be making these recognitions for us.
Thank you, Dr. Hamm. Board Chair, board members, we are honoring more top students and top schools, even though school is out, the awards keep coming, which is just a testament to another great, successful school year. And Board Vice Chair, Mr. Manning is going to help us with passing out students and employees recognized. Please come forward as I call your name. First, we'll start with six high-achieving new graduates who earned college-sponsored national merit scholarships. These scholarships are regarded as some of the highest academic honors attainable by high school students in our country. Their principals are here, they can come forward. We'll start with Kelsey Cox from Blackwood High School. Jordan Fokaroy from Ridgeview High School. Okay. Jedediah Guest from Spring Valley. Elizabeth Anne Matthews from Richland Northeast. Linda Thomas from Spring Valley. Hema Bendu Venakata from Spring Valley. Will Dr. Davis come accept their certificates? Congratulations. Kelsey, would you tell us where you're going to go to school?
St. Noah's College in Minnesota.
Okay, sure.
Great. And we have Representative Settany, the one for Ridgeview, Mr. Manning. So congratulations. All right. Dr. Davis, do you want to stay up there? And Mr. Timoney, you want to come up too?
This is for, I'm sorry, never mind. Changed my script without me going. I read my other script, he couldn't come. We had a national achievement scholarship winner, and he was not able to be here with us. Now, we want to recognize one of our elementary schools for its national recognition. North Springs Elementary Principal, Dr. David Holcendorf, and STEM's Lead Teacher, Dr. Sally Cato, please come forward. North Springs has been named a Magnet School of America School of Distinction for the third year in a row. North Springs is the only school in South Carolina recognized for the award this year. The award ceremony took place in Hartford, Connecticut, at the Magnet Schools of America National Conference. Even though STEM's is a school within a school program, it takes the whole school and district to support this award. Congratulations. Dr. Cappy Steck, we're going to call forward now, Principal of Forest Lake Elementary. She is the outstanding educational administrator in the country, as chosen by the National Association of Office Professionals. Let me tell you how she got this award. She started off as the Richland County Administrator of the Year, from that chapter, then she won the state award, and she was nominated because she's given 30 years or more to education, and especially given a lot of commitment and support to education office professionals. Congratulations, Dr. Steck. Staying with our educational office professionals, we had several employees in our district and our schools to receive designation as Certified Educational Office Employees by the National Association of Education Office Professionals. Please come forward as I call your name, and these are all members of the Richland County Chapter. Laura Baker, Communication Specialist in the Department of Communications. Vicki Benton, Human Resources Supervisor. Rebecca Cupstead, Administrative Assistant and Registrar for the Richland Two Charter High School. Nicole Kelly, Bookkeeper for Mueller Road Middle. Susan Laurie, Medicaid Assistant in the Special Services Department. Peggy Merrill, Administrative Assistant in the Academics Department. Amanda Miller, Teaching Assistant at Mueller Road Middle. Nona Montoya, Mailroom Coordinator for Operations. Kim Richardson, Human Resource Specialist. We're going to give a special congratulations to these ladies for earning this certification, and all you do to support education in Richland Two. Thank you. Now, would Chief Financial Officer, Dr. Harry Miley, and his team of professionals, please come forward, and we're going to let Dr. Miley introduce the group he has with him tonight.
Thank you. Tonight, we have some of our crew, some of our very special crew. You know, the district has grown a whole lot, and our finance department has not grown very much. So not only the volume of work that this team does, but the complexity of this team has increased greatly. And they're just the best team in the state, I think. We have Penny Donini at the far end, Sandy Whitaker, Dolores Coleman, Marsha Lomas, Vicki McIntyre, and Shelley Allen. And I think the best thing I can say for keeping up with the board and the district's efforts, and Dr. Hamm's, is that they're a joy to work with.
Now, let me tell you why they're up there. Besides being a joy to work with. They've won not one, but two Certificates of Achievement for Excellence in Financial Reporting from two different financial reporting agencies. These awards from the Association of School Business Officials International and the Government Finance Officers Association represent a significant accomplishment by a government and its management, and it reflects your commitment to the highest standards of school system financial reporting. Now, who can tell me how many years in a row the district has received this award? If you walk through the district office, you will see there is one wall almost completely covered, because this has been an award they have won many, many years in a row. Congratulations. Congratulations.
Congratulations, folks.
Now, we're going to do Palmetto Gold and Silver Awards. These highlight the hard work and dedication of our teachers, all employees, and our students. And we are proud to honor the 14 schools and centers that earned a total of 22 Palmetto Gold and Silver Awards this past school year. The awards are given for general performance and closing the achievement gap. We have principals, or they're designated, since it is vacation time. As I call your school name, please come forward, and I'll announce what awards you won. First, we have Bethel Hanbury Elementary, Gold General Award and Silver for Closing the Achievement Gap. Blackwood High, won Gold in both categories. Bookman Road, Gold for General Performance. We'll do one photograph, yeah, we'll do, we'll do one of the whole group. Sorry. Center for Achievement, won two silvers, one for general and one for closing the achievement gap. Center for Inquiry, Gold for General Performance. Center for Knowledge, Gold for General Performance. LW Conder Elementary, won a Gold for General Performance and a Silver for Closing the Achievement Gap. Lake Carolina Elementary, won Gold in both the general and the closing the achievement gap. Polo Road Elementary, Gold in general and silver for achievement gap. Ridgeview High, won double gold in general and closing the achievement gap. Roundtop Elementary, Gold in general performance. Sandlapper Elementary, Silver in the general performance. Spring Valley High, double gold, general and closing the achievement gap. And Windsor Elementary, Silver in the general performance. Please congratulate the schools on this hard work.
You guys are all squeezing tight for me. Congratulations again to all the winners, and thank you very much for the tremendous work that you do every day to ensure that all 27,000 students who enrolled in Richland Schools get the highest quality education that's absolutely possible. At this time, we'll have faculty focus. Dr. Hamm.
Yes, Ms. Nancy Gregory will be introducing our faculty focus for this evening.
For our faculty focus tonight, I'm going to ask Manatiya Freeman from E.L. Wright to join me at the podium, along with Linda Silvernail from Spring Valley. They're going to share their experiences tonight from boot camp for the Common Core implementation teams this week, and they just wrapped up two days, yesterday and today. In the next two days, the elementary teams will be with us at the Richland Two Conference Center, if you'd like to join us. And I may embarrass them, but Dr. Marsha Mosley and Ms. Emily Manago coordinated the boot camp. You will see that they are outfitted in their camouflage, they took the boot camp theme to heart. And again, did a fantastic job. So Linda and Manatiya are going to share their experiences with you.
Good evening. These past two days in the boot camp have been wonderful. Some of the things that we've discussed were the role of the implementation teams at each school, that they need to provide leadership and support for the Common Core State Standards at the school level. Develop a capacity across all grade levels for high-quality implementation of the Common Core State Standards, bringing them to routine use in all of the classrooms. To monitor and respond to teacher needs and support throughout the implementation process, as well as analyze data to make adjustments as needed throughout the implementation process. One of the things that we concentrated on today with analyzing the data was about the school snapshots, and how we could use those. That can give us a lot of information, even on the school level, by department, by grade level, of areas that we know that we're doing really well, and areas where we may need to work. Areas that we need to focus on during the 2014-2015 school year, formative assessment with feedback tied to the state standards. These are four of the eight math practice standards that we will focus on this school year. Supporting claims with evidence, higher-level text-based questions, and we've also added a few other things that we did not do in the 2013-2014 school year, which are argumentative writing, research as defined by the Common Core State Standards, and the K-5 foundational
The boot camp has given us a chance, really throughout the year, but especially these last two days, to deepen our understanding of the standards and the shifts, and how we might move our staff, our staffs into routine use of these things that we just looked at. The routine practice is the key, I think, to improving our scores across the boards. We began the process first by evaluating, as a school, where we are in relation to those activities, and whether we're at that beginning stage of just knowing about it, awareness, or whether we're at the trying-it-out stage of experimentation at Spring Valley. That's kind of where we feel like we are in many of those areas. Or whether we're at that place where we want to be, where it's routine use, where our teachers are owning it and using it. And after we did that activity and determined where we thought we were for each of those individual things, we have created a plan. It's a work in progress, I should say. We've created a plan, and we've planned professional development to bring our faculties to the place where we can set a goal to have routine use for all the things we've worked on the beginning of the year, before the end of the first semester, and then to have these newer pieces that we've added in, in routine use by the end of the year. That's our particular plan at Spring Valley. During this two days, we have been really pleased with the tools and the resources that the academics team have provided for us, for bringing back to our schools to put into good use with our faculty, to help bring them, the professional development that we know they are going to need to be able to bring all of these strategies into routine use. So those things that they've provided us with were modeled, we used each of their tools in our professional development during these days, and now we'll take those back and modify them in whatever way we need to, to meet the needs of our own staff. The, probably the best thing about having this time that's been carved out is that our teams are made up, not just of administrators, but also of teachers, and so it gives us an opportunity to have teachers have time that is dedicated strictly to this, not having to take them from their classrooms. But when we go back, our team, in fact, will meet again one more day in August at the school, so that we can finalize our plans for our professional learning opportunity we're going to give our teachers. Any questions?
Questions from the board?
Chairman.
Dr. Fleming.
How many are on your team at Spring Valley?
Most, our team at Spring Valley has six.
Okay. What's going to be the most difficult change for your teams, or your teachers, or however to implement the changes you're going to make? Or is there, is there a great change, I guess?
There is great change. You know, I think, and this is my opinion, this is not supported by everybody, but I do think that the Common Core standards are really not standards of content, but set skills. And so I think that teachers, because of the type of education system we've had for maybe the last 20 years with very focused content standards, it's going to be hard, I think, for teachers to turn loose of that, and turn the learning over to the students, and give them more responsibility for their own learning, because we want them to learn the skills where they can research and find and support by evidence the things that they are telling us are their facts. So I do think that there is a change in the, I guess, teaching brain of how we want teachers to adjust their control of the classroom.
Will that afford them more opportunity, you think, at the next level, if there is a next level, or at a working level, wherever, whatever? See, what I'm trying to get at is, does it work for, no matter where you go, what you do after high school?
Absolutely. I think that these are the skills that our students need to know to go into the workforce, or onto college, or whatever their goals are. They're about learning to think critically, and read critically, and write critically, and those are the skills that are going to make them successful.
I'm going to ask you a question, because it looks like, you know, in your outline, there was a lot of, in the math, there was a lot of writing. There was a lot of, it looked to me like some, is that, is that true, or reading, writing, more than just, you know, no one, you know, doing the, doing the problems?
Absolutely. And one of the things that we focused on over the past few days is looking at those math practice standards that you're referring to, and breaking them down, because we can actually see them in many, many classrooms. Some of the teachers didn't even realize, like, what we talk about attend to precision, how you can see that in an ELA classroom, how you can see that in a social studies classroom. So even though it's a totally different subject area, those teachers can help focus and help the teacher, the students enhance those skills in those particular classes as well.
Okay. Now, here's, here's where the rubber meets the road. If we do all this and get these students ready for those types of skills, but we're still measured on a state test, is that, I mean, how will that affect that, that situation? Or is the test going to change enough to reflect the skills you learned, if you understand what I'm saying?
Well, we're still teaching those basic standards, those foundational skills. The kids are still going to learn that. We're using different strategies to get there. And so I think that is what is key. The strategies that we use, we're helping to strengthen those skills and enhance those skills. We're not totally changing what we're teaching, it's more of an approach of how we're teaching it.
Thank you. Other questions from the board? Question from me. So if the General Assembly, which has now decided to give us this greatest period of a year, decides to completely, or a new state superintendent of education, decides to completely roll back Common Core, I think I hear you saying that it really won't matter, because the level of in-depth comprehension that your students are gaining from this new way of learning is going to be applicable regardless of what instrument or test that the state of South Carolina comes up with?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Thank you. Other questions, comments from the board?
I've got a question.
Mr. Manning.
One of the things I've heard from folks about Common Core is the way that they teach math, like multiplication tables, that there's, I guess, a TENS chart or something that they use, as opposed to necessarily memorization of those skills. Are y'all teaching both, or are you just teaching the new way, or how does that, how does that work?
Well, I'm at the middle school level, so that's not really a part of my curriculum, but as a teacher, a former teacher, I'm a curriculum specialist now, I can tell you that I use a variety of different strategies. I didn't tell my kids, you're going to do it this way, because you don't know how they're going to see it. And if you're really, truly preparing your kids, you will approach that in many different ways, so that they can learn it, and that they learn it well.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Good report.
Very good report. Next on our agenda is public participation. We had one individual who signed up, and Mr. Anthony Davis. Mr. Davis, are you here? Please come up to the mic.
My name is Tony Davis, it's not Anthony Davis. I am, I'm here because I'm just newly elected SIC Chair at Ridgeview High School. I know many of you have seen Ms. Mackey come up many times about our facilities, and I'm here to kind of continue that, not necessarily the struggle, but just the awareness of the renovations that we need at Ridgeview High School. At first, when I first was working with Ridgeview and Ms. Mackey on, on the facility renovations, I thought for a minute that maybe everybody was being a little bit overzealous about the renovations, until Ms. Mackey took the opportunity to show me around Ridgeview. I've had two sons have attended Ridgeview, they graduated in 2007, and I have a young daughter now who's going to be a rising sophomore. And as Ms. Mackey took me around the site, I, I was really kind of taken aback by what I saw. And, and I told her, I said, well, this is unacceptable, and she said, she kept telling me, you should have seen it before, you should have seen it before. And I thought, well, if this is the way it is now, what was it like before? So I just, and I just want to raise awareness. I know that you can't respond to anything that I say this evening, but I want to make sure that we raise awareness, number one, that our 10-year plan is still on track, because there is a 10-year renovation, and I hope it's going to be aggressively followed through with, just as aggressive as the $41 million IT building that's going to be built by 2016. Because for the rich, for the school because for the rich, for the school district and, and all the renovations that go, that go with that, because we really need that. We really need our facilities to be upgraded. The other thing that we submitted, my second reason I'm up here is, the other thing that we submitted was a 10, a priority list, and I'm hoping that you receive that priority list. One of the things that was of utmost concern for me on that priority list was the fact, and I didn't know this until I walked in the, until I was, it was brought to my attention, and that is that our, our kids don't have air conditioning in the hallways. And I didn't, I thought that was just kind of strange, but they didn't have air conditioning in the hallway. So I know that there's a plan to get the air conditioning renovated, and I'm hoping that that will get completed by the end of the summer so our kids can be a little cooler. I know that the hot, hot days are basically primarily through May, May through September, and the kids are, you know, only there for about a month on each side, but the fact that there's no ventilation in the, in the hallways of our, our high school is, is, to me, is, is not acceptable. So I'm here to let you know that I hope to attend a lot of these meetings and continue to raise these issues because I think it's very necessary. I'm not going to approach you with the comparison of the other high schools because Ridgeview is a unique high school. And, and as you saw tonight, we, we hold achievement, academic achievement or scholar, scholar achievement high with the goal, goal that we just, that was just presented to Dr. Thomas. So it's not like we do not strive for academics, but what we do, what we also want to strive for is, is, is to look good as a school and for, to encourage other students in our, in our, in our community to attend. There are a lot of things that need to be addressed, and I'm hoping that our board will aggressively look at those things. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Davis. And, and though you're correct, we don't typically respond publicly to this, um, public participation. Do let me say on the record, though, that the, the 10-point plan has been presented to the board and the board is prepared to discuss it, would have discussed it tonight, but Ms. Mackey is out, is unavailable, was not able to come, and so she asked us to wait until she could be here to be a part of that discussion. That's, so I want to share that with you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Chair, I also wanted to-
Mr. Manning.
Just thank Mr. Davis for your service to the SIC chair. Thank you for stepping up. Yeah, appreciate it.
Mr. Davis is the only one who signed up. However, if there's anyone else who was here who did not sign up and would like to speak, you certainly can address the board at this time if you choose to do so. Thank you very much. Next on the agenda is voting on the executive session items. The chair will entertain a motion. Inspector.
Mr. Chair, student number one, deny the appeal. Student number two, deny the appeal. Student number three, deny the appeal. And refer to Blackwood Academy.
One and two also. One and two also refer to Blackwood as well. Yes.
Uh, one and two is deny the appeal.
And refer to Blackwood.
One through four, I thought.
One, two, three, and four, deny the appeal and refer back to Blackwood Academy. And number five, deny the appeal.
Second.
We're going to, we're going to vote on students one through four, Jill. We're pulling number five out, I'm going to vote on it separately. The motion was made by Ms. Specter on students one through four. It's been seconded by Ms. Anderson. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, we're ready to vote as soon as you get it up for us, Jill. Excuse me?
I don't have it up. Yes.
Motion passes seven zero. Thank you very much. Student appeal number five, Ms. Specter?
Mr. Chair, I make a motion that we deny the appeal for student number five.
Second.
Removed by Ms. Specter and seconded by Dr. Fleming. Any further discussion?
Bumped down. But mine's yes. I'm yes.
You're yes?
Yeah.
Yes.
Did you miss that? Does it want to come up, faculty doctors? I can't come up with a faculty. Oh, my last.
Motion passes five two. Thank you very much. Next on our agenda, new business action requested. Act 155, diploma procedures and petitions. Dr. Hamm.
Um, Act 155 allows students who previously would have graduated but failed to pass the exit exam, if they may, met all the other requirements for graduation, except for the exit exam requirement, they're now able to petition for a diploma. And Dr. Katina Davis is going to go through the procedural information about that and bring forward certain petitions.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Mr. Chair, members of the board, Dr. Hamm, tonight before you, for consideration are the, the procedures from the administration regarding our response to Act 155. As a part of our procedures, if, with your approval, Information Technology and Communications will launch on our website a petition and our procedures. The communications department will provide communication via the website, social media blackboard, PSAs on R2TV, and a news release. Each month on the first Friday until December 2015, each high school will receive a list of students that they will review and determine if their academic records brings them into compliance with Act 155. With your approval, I will receive those lists and submit those names to the South Carolina Department of Education to receive those diplomas. When students are approved, if those diplomas are received, then we are requesting that they either receive their diplomas at a board meeting with your approval, picking up their diplomas at the district office, or having the diploma mailed to them. So for tonight, we have three considerations for you. If you so approve, then I will serve as the designated to submit the names to the State Department, petitioning those diplomas, approving the district procedures and guidelines which you have received, and we would also like to submit to you tonight the names of the students from the class of 2014, and upon their petitioning, we would like to go ahead and submit their names to receive their diplomas in a timely manner.
Any questions or comments from the board?
Um, just one comment.
Dr. Elkins Johnson.
I'm very excited about this Act 155, and I would love for the students to come to the board meeting just to be recognized because that's such a compliment to have. So thank you.
Thank you very much. Other questions or comments from the board? Mr. Manning?
I appreciate you guys turning this around so quickly, getting this in place, and I know it took a little bit of work to get a plan, so thank you for, for getting that done.
Thank you, Mr. Manning. Other questions or comments from the board?
Motion?
Ms. Anderson?
Mr. Chair, I move that we accept the Act 155 diploma procedure, procedure that Mrs. Davis has given us, and those students who petitioned already, that they will get theirs, and if they so wish or desire to put on a cap and gown and come before us, I think we would all be happy.
Second.
Second.
Been moved by Ms. Anderson, seconded by Dr. Elkins Johnson. Any further discussion? Motion passes seven zero. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Davis. Agenda item 10.2 was tabled earlier. We'll move to new business or action requested, end of year report. Dr. Hamm.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, this is the last meeting of this school year, and we do have an end of the year report that our community relations folks have put together. It's going to be unveiling for me. They've done something new. I'm excited to see it. So here is the year in review.
Spring Valley, Spring Valley, can't you see? All your awards just hypnotize me. Forty-four years of excellence sustained, always bringing pride to brighten names.
One perfect ACT score, one national achievement finalist, two President's scholars, six national marathoners, nine regional championships, graduation rate 10.7 improvement over two years.
Trustees and the South Carolina Department of Education, I hereby affirm that you have completed the requirements of the South Carolina Legislature, the State Department of Education, and the Richland Two Board of Trustees, and are duly entitled to receive your diplomas at this time. Congratulations.
Did you know that we have 66 native languages spoken from 60 different countries that are represented among our 27,000 students? That is quite diverse.
give real estate agents the information that they need to be able to sell houses to prospective home buyers that are moving into the school district, that hopefully we can help them be successful in their sales, and they can help us be successful in bringing folks into For the first time, Richland Two paired up with Richland One to form Team Richland. What a winning partnership.
I think this is a great collaboration. It creates a lot of energy and synergy among the two school districts, actually the two largest school districts in the Midlands, working for such a tremendous cause.
school board members, key administrators, and principals from Richland Two, amazing things can happen. That's the idea behind Richland Two's first annual State of the District in Partnership Breakfast, held in conjunction with the Greater Columbia Chamber of Commerce Breakfast at Sunrise. More than 250 people attended the breakfast held at Westwood High School.
I'm ready to learn some more.
Me too.
This is the first day of school at VHE, and we're excited.
How are you? I can tell y'all are ready for everything.
Good morning. How are you?
Good to see you.
Good to see you. Thanks for coming.
Good morning to all of you and welcome back to school in an awesome school year.
I'm really excited. I love Conder. I'm new there, I can't wait.
We'll take good care of him.
My first day of school was very cool. I got to make a whole bunch of friends.
It was a great first day of school.
It was a great first day of school.
Next on our agenda, the agenda items for July twenty-ninth.
That's the big thing to notice.
Yes. And the change is that on the agenda tonight, it indicates that our next board meeting in July, we only have one board meeting during the month of July. Initially, it was scheduled for July fifteenth. That board meeting will be held on July twenty-ninth, and we'll make sure all the appropriate notices get out in time, but I wanted to mention that tonight, and the agenda items are attached. Dr. Hamm.
We'll have the annual report for the Richland Two Charter High School, an update on our building facilities progress, a report on the Ridgeview Facilities improvements, and a report from the superintendent's planning retreat that took place today.
Are there any other items the board would wish to add to the July twenty-ninth agenda or any future board meeting agenda?
Mr. Chair.
Dr. Elkins Johnson.
A few weeks ago, we were giving a proposal by one of our employees in the district, and I would like to add that to the agenda because I know the agenda's been very full and we hadn't been able to get to it, so if we can add that to the agenda so we can make a sound decision pretty soon.
Sure, that's the one on the character.
Character education, yes.
Yes, we will. Thank you very much, Dr. Elkins Johnson. Other items the board would like to add to the agenda? Thank you very much. Next on our agenda is the public participation, Part Two. No one signed up for that, however, if there's anyone in the audience who would like to address the board, you can feel free to come to the podium at this time. Thank you.
Mr. Chair.
Ms. Anderson.
It's not an agenda item, but I wanted to inquire on the cursive writing.
Yes, ma'am.
Or implementing that this coming school year, Dr. Hamm.
I need to find out some more about that. Let me give you a report on it. The legislation was passed to include multiplication tables and cursive writing. I want to, need to find out what the timeline and the resources are for doing that. We'll let you know.
Grade levels. Okay, I'd like to know that. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Anderson. Yes, Ms. Manning?
And in that same vein, if we could get an update on the work keys.
Mm-hmm.
I know the law was passed.
Yes.
And also the third grade reading initiative.
Sure.
We may not be ready at the next meeting, but I think we need to be prepared soon.
Absolutely. Thank you, Ms. Manning. Any other items or issues from the board? If not, at this time, we will have board and superintendent comments. Start to my far right, Ms. Anderson.
I'd like to say congratulations to all of the recipients of awards tonight. And the end of the school year video was really neat. I think when it first sound came on, it was a little frightening to us up here. But anyway, it was a nice, it was a nice film, movie, whatever you want to call it. It was interesting. And I might get you guys a contract with your hip-hop selves. It's not hip-hop. What do you call that?
Rap.
Rap, with your rap. That was really cute.
How come I knew that and you didn't?
You know, one of those brain. But anyway, that was really nice, and congratulations to our new hires and our folks that were promoted. I know you will do us well. You will not let us down, and it was not just a fly-by-night decision. Those decisions were made with a lot of thought and input, so I'm holding you accountable to make us very proud of each and every one of you. I hope all of you have a wonderful summer. Thank you for coming tonight.
Thank you, Ms. Anderson. Dr. Elkins Johnson?
Yes, I know that we have some principals out here that just completed their first year, so if you're present, if you would stand, because you guys have done a great job and we'd like to recognize you all. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Elkins Johnson. Dr. Fleming?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. You know what? I looked at the video at the end of the school year, and these people who use this for insomnia, you're going to wake them right up at night when they're watching this. I can just see it now, these people will pop away. But thank you so much for that. I mean, with that, showing what the schools, this district did this year, and seeing the award winners for leadership and what's going on, it makes you proud to be part of the team like that. It really does. And the new people here, and we're serious about leadership in this district, because that's the only thing that keeps you going. You can have all the computers and the facilities, you won't, but if you don't have those people, right people at the top, and we hope we do, and we're sure we do, then we just, you can't go where you need to be going. And I do like to report on the Common Core, and I appreciate that. It was very good. Thank you very much. I've been back and forth on that ever since, and the state may change it next year, we just don't even know. But anyway, what y'all have done, I think will help our students, and that's the main thing, no matter what. And I knew it didn't matter what it was, we're going to get the best out of whatever we have to do. And I've seen it happen this year, it lasted two, three years. And I want to thank you for your energy and your dedication to our district, all of you here tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Fleming. Mrs. Brill?
Just wanted to echo what we've been hearing, and congratulations to all the folks that have received recognitions and awards. It's getting so, it's kind of commonplace, but it really is special, and it's something that we all strive for and work towards, and it's nice that it's expected. And I'm extremely proud of our students, and then our faculty and our staff, and I want to welcome our new principals, and those who are new to the district, and those who are not new to the district, and wish you the best of luck. Any way that we can help and support you, please feel free to let, know that this board supports you in everything you do. It's a huge responsibility, and I know you're up to it. It was a very good process, the selection process. Also enjoyed the video, I thought it was excellent, to sort of recap everything that we've been doing. I noticed sometimes we were dressed very warmly. It's hard to remember because it's so hot now, but we did have a cold winter, and we did a lot of great things. Real proud of our kids, and those that are going to college, and wherever they're going and whatever they're doing. They've gotten a good background from Richland Two. So, thank you, and thank you, Dr. Hamm. I think we've had a very successful year, and real proud of all the progress we've made, and all the hires we've hired, and the direction that we're going in, and thank you for that. And thank you, our chair, Mr. Jackson, for good leadership.
Ms. Specter? Thank you, Ms. Specter. Mr. Manning?
Chair, thank you. Just want to reiterate again for our new principals and those folks making changes, we're excited to have you in all of your new positions, and I know it's really going to move the ball forward a great deal, having you there. For all of our other folks in the district, teachers, principals alike, thank you for your continued dedication to all of our students and families and the community. You put in a lot of time, and we really appreciate the effort and the work that you put into it. Dr. Hamm, I want to thank you. It's been just an excellent year, in my opinion, and I think the changes that we've made and... I don't need to comment further, that was all the comment we need to hear. And as far as the folks from Ridgeview, just know that this board, and I speak for myself in particular, I'm dedicated to making sure that you have a school that you can be proud of, and a facility that will take care of our students and all of their needs. And, Mr. Chair, thank you for your leadership as well. Thank you.
Dr. Hamm?
First of all, I want to remind everybody that this Thursday at nine o'clock in the morning, we have the groundbreaking for the Richland Two Institute of Innovation. That's going to be a fabulous learning opportunity for our high school students throughout the district, and I want to make sure everybody knows that they're invited to participate in that. I hope you'll be there. For those of you who don't know where that's located, it is in the site immediately next door to where the Plex is in the village at Sand Hill, and everyone is invited to be there at Thursday at nine o'clock. This is really an exciting opportunity for our kids, and I'm so glad to see it coming out of the ground. I also want to congratulate the district instructional technology team, along with Nancy Gregory and the folks in academics. Our one-to-one program has been an initiative that involved both those departments, and this weekend, they will go to receive the Sylvia Charper Award from the International Society for Technology and Education for the innovative use of technology in Richland Two, and I congratulate them on receiving that award. And then, last but not least, I want to thank everyone. I did love the year in review, the variety, the number of recognitions, the opportunities that our students and our staff have had to really excel. It's just really remarkable, and as much as I appreciated the round of applause that I got, it is just right back at you because we have an extraordinary group of people who are dedicated to quality education, who have made this a fabulous year, and I'm very grateful, and I say thank you to all of you.
Richland School District Two is a growing and dynamic institution and organization and community, and even though we are growing, and we're dynamic, and we are diverse, and we have had changes and shifts in all kind of data, tonight, the thing that caught my attention more than anything else on that video was the fact that yet again, we exceeded the amount of dollars that our students gained in terms of scholarships. Seventy-five million dollars scholarships were offered to Richland School District Two's graduating seniors in 2014. I would surmise that if we looked around the state of South Carolina and looked at the number of school districts that are our size, that we are rivaling all of them in terms of how well we are doing. And it simply goes to the fact that teachers are the ones who actually cause learning. And so I want to thank every teacher in every classroom that spends the extra time with every student, and I mean that very sincerely, to ensure that regardless of whether or not they're from one of those sixty-six foreign countries or speaking a different language or from right here in our own community, born and raised here, moved in, regardless of where they came from, they belong to us now, and you have committed to making sure that they achieve at the level that we have been expecting and have become accustomed to our students achieving. And no obstacles get in our way, no stumbling blocks prevent you from doing the very best job. I want to thank the principals for the outstanding work that you do in supporting your teachers in classrooms every day. SIC presidents and PTOs and all of the other concerned parents and community leaders who have made it their commitment and their pledge to ensure that our students are successful. Thank you, thank you, thank you, and the results are showing even here on again tonight from another outstanding year. Tonight will be Dr. Cheryl Caution Parker's last board meeting in her capacity as deputy superintendent. She's retiring from Richland Two after a more than thirty-plus-year career in the district. It was her wish that we not make it a huge fanfare and call any major public attention to her retirement. As chairman, I reluctantly agreed to her request. However, I will say that Dr. Caution Parker, to you, Dr. Caution Parker, you will be missed. Your principal leadership at Forest Lake Elementary and Dent Middle School provided the foundation for those schools' current success today. I want you to know on behalf of this board, the district, faculty, and thousands of students and parents whose academic lives you have positively touched over your career, that we will, that we honor you and wish you the very best in the next season of your life. Congratulations. Motion to adjourn at this time?
It's a move.
Moved and seconded. Thank you very much. Meeting is adjourned.